Good evening. My name is Al Sevins. I'm the Director of the Southfield Downtown Development Authority. I'm here this evening seeking Council's approval allowing the Southfield Downtown Development Authority to sell 4.8 acres which we own to Oakland Community College. As you are aware, the DDA purchased 4.8 acres early June from Samyono in the amount of approximately 1.5 million dollars. Since this time, we have been in discussions with OCC regarding expansion plans and other issues that they have pertaining to their operations. As you may know, they recently had a $25 million investment which some of you attended. You can understand the magnitude of what they are going through. They are experiencing tremendous growth. This year alone, they've experienced 36% growth in their population and are continuing to experience similar growth in the outgoing years. Do you recognize the property? You realize they are landlocked and their current operations, they have immediate needs regarding parking for the student population. As students who are interested in taking the life sciences courses will all have to come into the Southfield campus from the various other campuses. So, the issue today is allowing the DDA to sell the parcel to them. As you know, also in June, City Council voted as part of our budget that we would need to have your final approval for allowing the sale of this property. With me this evening, I have Doug Smith, who's an advisor to the college, and he's available for any questions relative to the college plans. Thank you, Madam President.
My name's Doug Smith. I'm with Aquas Realty Advisors.
That's not working.
That's right. I've been here since seven o'clock. I should know that by now. My name's Doug Smith. I'm with Aquas Realty Advisors.
Are you trying to make a point?
No. Really, I'm really not. I'm not missed at home. I know that.
Point is taken anyway.
Nonetheless, I'm with Aquas Realty Advisors. We serve on behalf of Oakland Community College.
Can you speak up a little bit? The Southfield might be a problem.
Can't hear me. I'm Doug Smith. I'm with Aquas Realty Advisors, and we serve as real estate consultants to Oakland Community College at their leader. Our President Dave Wong is the Oakland Community College Foundation Board Director, and has served on the foundation there for many years. And on behalf of the college, I'm here to answer any questions which you might have. As Al mentioned, our campus on Southfield, within Southfield, has grown tremendously, tapered off a little last year. Projections for the next four years are 10-12% growth. We are landlocked and are experiencing this point in time, some difficulties handling our student population and parking that student population. So, our imminent need is to secure property, which Al has helped us in facilitating here potentially. We are going to expand our parking facilities as soon as this land is secured. And then with regards to future development on that property, we hope to expand our curriculum. We hope to work with the city of Southfield. We understand that this is a prime piece of property with great exposure, and we look forward to some type of town gown, if you will, plan for this property as is called for in the master plan. We're not opposed to a mix of developments there as long as they forward the college's interests in expanding their curriculum in Southfield. If there are any questions, we'd be glad to handle those.
Can you tell us, I know you have immediate or you want to move immediately or as soon as possible on this. The parking expansion, how much of that 4.8 acres do you think will be taken by the expanded parking?
You know, we have not looked at a plan carefully at this point in time, but what we've talked about is expanding immediately to the west where you see that peninsula that drops down and connects to our parking. And we think we can accommodate, you know, 15-20% pickup in total parking within that area, subject to engineering setback requirements. And, you know, one of the things that we battled is people utilizing those northerly parking spots. They don't want to use them in the winter because it's a long walk. And so, if we could park and handle our immediate needs in that area, that would be our objective here, I'm sure.
I think from our discussion in June, our concern was having parking right up to Nine Mile Road. We did not want that. And then, as you alluded to, we did talk about for mixed use perhaps across from the TV station. So, I just wanted to know if there was any update on, I mean, it makes sense to me to use the panhandle for parking.
Yeah.
It's close in, it's an odd piece of property or the odd part of the property. But that was our major, I think our major concern, why we wanted to come back, have this comeback of the college.
And that's understandable. And we look forward to working with the city as we have in the past on maximizing the use of that property to both our benefit and the city's benefit. You know, parking right up to Nine Mile Road would not make any sense from the perspective of the college necessarily either. I think, you know, if we do anything there in the future, and we don't have any solid signs of it coming down, or I'd share them with you, and I think Chancellor Meyer would as well, but, you know, there's an opportunity to develop there. We've got frontage to get our name out on that frontage as well. We're in the business of marketing our business, and parking doesn't really belong out on Nine Mile Road.
I need to refresh my memory. The Radisson, that is, did it tour down? Oh, the Ramada?
No.
The Ramada?
That is not, that is our piece, not the city's piece. That's not the piece in question.
I understand. Is that to be tore down?
There will be specifications going out for bid for demolition.
Is there an approximate cost of that demolition?
I don't think that's been determined yet. I mean, I've heard estimated, $1 million or so.
How much land is there?
That's about five acres, that piece.
Our piece is about five acres. So, five acres, it is possible with the same, less, well, same as the 4.8 acres, less, yes, demolition. So, actually, it's going to be a negative, but it depends on how the value is. What I'm trying to get at is, I don't know. Vacant land has to be worth more than equal amount of land to build in. It has to be demolished. And I'm wondering why this wasn't divided right out, that we give, we give the additional parking to OCC and retain the frontage on future development for the city, for the DDA. In other words, when you tear down the building and you draw a line, you'd have all that frontage for strip shopping or similar use where you have additional value. And the bulk of your frontage is really on, and there's a piece that you're wasting just on parking. And from a real estate standpoint, if everything had land, it's a bad deal. So, I mean, it's good for OCC, but I can't, I just, I just, I just don't weigh this out.
You know, the land where the building is, is not what we're talking about.
I understand that.
Okay.
That belongs to, and so, if you have five acres there, and I don't know what the cost of demolition is, that, that, that the property is going to come in less, going to come in less than what you, or more than what you're selling the other one for. In other words, the 4.8 acres, you get a million something for it, a million, a million five. All right, so, if the building wasn't there, they say they're both worth a million, all right? Now, you've got, and the piece where the building is, you've got a million less demolition. So, the vacant piece has to be worth more even to break even. You have similarity of cost. In other words, if the, if the building was sitting on the 4.8 acres, you know, in a million dollars, that would be fine because then they'd demolish the building and you'd have the other piece vacant. Now, you've got, you're selling off the best piece of land because it's vacant and buildable. The other one's not buildable, the one you keep them. It's got a building on it. So, you're going to have to, I mean, if I'm all wet, somebody in real estate let me know I'm crazy, because I know if I was buying land, I would buy the vacant piece with more frontage on Nine Mile Road. It's a better deal, a million dollars, and I could do commercials along Nine Mile Road and sell the back piece to the adjoining property. Want to square it off? And get that off selling it to them for half a million dollars and keeping the frontage? You might think that way.
Madam?
Madam President, we just offer some comments. The offer that we have in front of us this evening is roughly $300,000 per acre for the raw land. You are correct, the raw land is worth more. I think what the city and the Downtown Development Authority here is recognizing the community college's need for expansion. The crude math on the westerly piece of property which holds the property, the city acquired that through tax foreclosure, I think it was just under $480,000. So, right now, the city's carrying an IOU for $400,000. Our preliminary numbers on demolition are about a million dollars. So, if the city were to sell that parcel roughly five acres for $300,000, we would cover our cost of our demolition and what we paid for the rear taxes. When this building first came up to us, everyone in this room agreed that our end game was to get the Ramada in down. We've been in court, we've been through federal litigation. During the course of the last couple of months, on the September 28th, Mr. Schret, myself, Terry Crowe, we met with representatives of MISTHA. The state has a fund to pay to assist, it was the Attorney General Settlement, to pay for blighted and demolition buildings. It is staff's intent at a later date to bring forward to council, a request to submit this site as a candidate where we will apply to the state of Michigan through MISTHA, Michigan Department of Human Services, and the Michigan Land Bank Authority to ask them to fund the demolition of this site. Staff is also exploring placing a speculative brownfield plan on the westerly five acre site, similar to what we've done, what we did for the former People State Bank on Evergreen Road here, just down the street, as well as what we did across the street. Council has also instructed the city planner to put together an overlay development district which we're presenting to council in the immediate near future. And that is all, it basically reads like a checklist of those items that the state of Michigan wants to see on these brownfield sites in order to get these tax credits. So, we're looking at creating some value to this site in a very different fashion. We declare the site a brownfield. On the redevelopment front, the developer hopefully will be eligible for one of the tax credits from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, a way to bring money in those state dollars from the tax credit fund for, into Southfield, also to assist with the demolition. We have a meeting scheduled November 9th with MISTHA again on the redevelopment front. Our lobbyist is working with us in scheduling a meeting with both the Michigan Land Bank leadership as well as the Michigan Department of Human Services leadership. So, that's the front we're taking to create value. Tonight, we're responding to, you know, the council, to the community colleges' offer to acquire the five acres for what it's worth. And just so this is, it should not be a secret, the community college is also interested in the other five acres, but they need to be able to proceed. At the same time, staff needs additional time though to complete the due diligence. I would like to get as large of a commitment from the state from these demolition funds. There's $15 million fund available. Next Monday, we're meeting with representatives from Oakland County. The DDA has scheduled Dan Hunter's group, and we're going to come in and go through a visioning session of what we see on that westerly five acre piece of property. I think Al should also speak to the parcel immediately to the west of that and some of your actions that you've had with, is it North Illinois State Bank?
So, the parcel that's west of it is the North Park Plaza, which is?
Rusty Dale.
Rusty Dale. It's a 260,000 square foot building on 11 and 1/2 acres owned by the Bank of Illinois. Bank of Illinois at this point in time would like to do something with that parcel. However, the infrastructure, to get that parcel up to operation is an enormous amount of cost. As an example, there are single paint windows in that building. The HVAC alone is close to a million dollars. So, the Bank of Illinois at this point in time is thinking about whether they even should demolish the property or whether it's an appropriate reuse. So, we're working with that. We understand that that's a viable piece. Brett's comment about the vacant acres, we can't discount the fact that OCC has physical plans for that property. Can they tell you what they are today? No. But if at some point, they're ready to expand, they're not going to go across the street. It represents a liability for the students walking across the street. So, the entire 4.8 acres is an important piece in our overall strategy. And as you know, looking at where I live, once we put that campus there, what happened to the immediate downtown? This represents a small town for the DDA, let alone the city. That's why we think that selling the 4.8 directly to OCC makes sense while we retain, while the city retains the other five acres and looks for some alternative funding to demolish that building.
And if I could add, the overlay development district will contribute to a lot of the design elements. For example, how close that parking lot can go to Nine Mile Road. It'll require that those pedestrian amenities be put in, working towards the pedestrian goals of having a walkable downtown area within our DDA area. I also want to comment that on the North Illinois State Bank, we're talking to the owners of that building about our PACE program for the energy improvements. As he goes through a decision tree process, we need to make sure that he knows all of the economic development tools available to him. PACE is one program. The other program may be looking at treating the building as a functionally obsolete brownfield plan and attempting to negotiate tax credit from the state of Michigan to make some of that investment happen as well.
As you know, I'm very familiar with what happened at our local expansion of OCC and our local, as part of that. But what I'm trying to say here is from a real estate standpoint, you know, we talked about all the things that you may have in Hopper, but those are hours and hours and hours of work to try to get whatever to happen, happen. That's why the value of the property is so low, is because to do anything, you're going to have to find a cheaper way of getting the building out of there to make it developable, able to be developed. The other piece, I mean, you move right in. It's even, you've got a surface on it, you know? I mean, it's a clean deal. There's never been a building on it, so you know it's clean, you know? There's no asbestos in it. There's no nothing. And I think the better deal would be to, you know, for OCC and DDA, because it's going to come off the tax roll because they don't pay taxes, would be to say, if anything, let's work a deal where we are clean out of it. We're washed out. We have no problem. We don't have to go look for brownfield, we don't have to look for nothing. If they want to ask us for help to get these things, we do it. So, why are we buying a problem and letting somebody else off with no problem? I mean, I, I mean...
Well, we bought a problem that we've had for five, six years.
I understand that. I understand, but the whole problem, the whole problem is, is to take the building out of there and get a fresh piece of land. That's a problem. Right? That's the problem. The other piece, there's no problem, it's vacant. I mean, does anybody care and say, oh, that empty lot looks bad? You know? Or do they look at the building and say, hey, that building is killing our area?
I'm confused here because we had this discussion in June, and it was a long discussion.
Yeah.
And we decided that this is the way we were going to go. I mean, we already made that decision.
I didn't make the decision.
You were here.
Well, we had the discussion.
We made the decision. We ended up buying the property and...
It went beyond here. Well, you didn't buy the property, that was the decision. We own the property with the DDA.
Right.
Now, you're trying to sell it. The property consists of a building that has to come down, and a vacant piece of property...
All pre-determined, Don. We knew it was going to play out.
Yes, there was a tri-party agreement between the parties and a, I think Mr. Synder was absolutely correct, there was a component that as soon as the DDA acquired this property, the vacant piece from the owners, that they would then turn around and sell that piece. We knew that the interest was...
For a million dollars?
Well, we knew that the interest was from OCC. Apparently, that's the offer is to make the DDA hold.
Was the million dollars on the table? Or was it to sell it at a price?
It's for a million five. What the DDA bought it for. That's the offer from the college.
That was the offer, but it was not accepted by the council.
That's why we're here this evening.
Yeah, well, that's right, yeah. But it was in a tri-party agreement.
That's right.
For a million five?
Yes.
I'm not sure if the number was stated in there.
I don't think the number was there.
I don't know that you...
Your points weren't taken.
I know it is. And the real estate business, I wouldn't do that in a million years. Why would I do anything like that for the city?
I think one of the issues that...
I mean, I would buy a problem for nothing.
I think one of the issues that OCC has is that their setback from Nine Mile is such a, unless you know they're there, you can't even see them.
I'm saying to you, why don't you split that lot? You can get less money, split it, they got the parking, and you have the frontage. Now, you have, tear down the other building, and you got all the frontage on Nine Mile Road. You sell it to the developer for strip shopping.
Then the college isn't going to have any real options to expand, which is our objective.
Well, the option is, why should we invest in our, in your expansion? What I mean by that is, why should I be a holder of land so that you can expand at some time in the future? Why don't you buy it now? You guys got money. Why don't you buy the whole thing now? We'll help you tear down the building, and you got everything. You can build another place for college on that piece.
Well, they may be interested in our piece.
They may.
Well, we're the ones that are, we're delaying this because we want to look at some options in terms of financing the demolition. We've got some due diligence going on. If you said to the community college right now, buy our piece too, I suspect they would be interested.
They would be.
And staff is concerned that on the other westerly five acre, we want to try to create some tax yield before we at least go through a visioning process as to what possibly creating some new development on the westerly piece. And we're also looking at this North Illinois State Bank property, but they are clearly interested in the full 10 acre piece of property.
And we also discussed straightening out the road.
Yes, we did. And I...
Lyndon, bring the package that you have planned before us.
I see a parallel here, Don.
I don't see a parallel. I see getting...
To Denzo, the conversation on Denzo. That's a partnership. We had this discussion.
Why should I be a partner with, with, what's it going to do?
Because whenever the development and the success of OCC helps the city of Southfield, that's why, just like Denzo. And it's a risk.
Right, no, it's not. I mean, no, if you know value, it's okay if you get more money for it.
It's a risk because we're, they're going to do their due diligence and get, get the brownfield and straighten out the road.
We have to do that. We're doing all the work to get that building down.
Exactly. And it's an eyesore that we are...
You know how many hours it's going to take to get all that?
...about all the time. Look at, look at the condition of that building. People talk about it all the time.
Get it down.
So, that's why we reacted.
Just get it down.
That's why we reacted.
Just get it down.
All right. And let them do their due diligence so that they can maybe get somebody else to help pay for it.
You pay the million for it, it's zero. You pay the million for it...
Pay the demolition.
I...
You get someone else to pay for the demolition.
Yeah.
Then where does it go?
And where are you going to get that? You've got to work all these...
Brett's got plans?
Well, it was a plan.
The movie is this year. They're very, they're very interested.
Buy the whole thing. Straighten out the road and get, and then they got a very large campus, all the way down to Nine Mile Road. They can do all anything they want. Build another college there, take on more students. God bless them.
I have a chair of counsel if you're on the app.
Right here. Sell all that, sell all that, give them even the road. Give them the road, give them the road, and that whole piece squared right off, right there. They got a gorgeous piece of property.
I have a concern that there's $15 million available for demolition. Those applications are due...
Now, 15 million?
15 million. They're due December 12th. And Southfield has been one of the hardest hit cities in the state for foreclosure. And at the end of the day, when you look at, we've done a real good job, folks, of tearing the garbage down. You're spending about $120,000 a year tearing it down. We may not have an eligible project for demolition in Southfield. This is our best bet to get something out of this foreclosure crisis. I'm afraid if this project is lost, and this is why we met with the MISTHA folks, why we met, why we're meeting with the Land Bank folks, why we'll be meeting with the three agencies that are controlling these funds, each agency has one person reviewing these applications. At the end of the day, there's a scorecard. And us and business development, the DDA and the planner, we work out that scorecard. If you folks see a newspaper article that says, "Southfield got zero out of $50 million", I know my phone's going to be ringing. And the same thing out of the $100 million from the state tax credit fund on these brownfields and that. If Ann Arbor gets $12 million, Detroit gets $30 million, and we get zero, I know the phone's going to be ringing. Why aren't we, you know, what aren't we doing? This is our best application, and I can tell you, the folks at MISTHA...
How much are you going to get in, out of 15 million to tear down this building?
We're going to ask for the full amount if we get...
What amount?
If we get...
Four thousand?
Probably a million dollars. So, that's what our estimates have been based on, based on the, we went, we took our EPA grant, we did some testing.
And what's the value of that piece of property going to be?
Just without the building?
Yeah.
Five acres at $300,000, 1.5.
And then, and then you're going to redo a road?
We're not necessarily going to be redoing the road.
Then what? You're going to add the road vacant piece to that purchase that you have?
We're...
With the hotel spot? Are you going to square that off?
That is a possibility. At this time, we're not planning on relocating that road, but that has been discussed. On the road, candidly, we have said to the Michigan folks, Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and the Michigan Department of Transportation, between Providence Hospital and OCC, we've had $65 million invested in this corner of the city. That's worthy of an economic development enhancement grant or money for new roads. When we were looking at what staff calls Project Neptune, Sears moving into the old Blue Shield Building, we had a commitment, Shelley, for how much for new road money for 11 Mile. They were going to resurface 11 Mile... They were gonna resurface Eleven Mile Road.
It was several million dollars.
Several million dollars.
So you got declining tax base in the DDA.
But we-
Declining tax base. Now you're taking more property off the DDA at property value, all right? And, and, and they, I mean, how, how are you gonna pick up revenue? Where are you gonna pick up revenue?
By, by not, by selling it to taxable entities, the best thing they can do.
We have several parties-
What is, then, why are people in line trying to buy the dusty mail? Well, Fred, I mean, you guys do what you want. I, I'm a real estate business. I would take that thing for love nor money. I wouldn't trade a clean piece of land like that for a dump. No way in the head. I've been through that kinda stuff. Sue it in Highland Park.
We're trying to create some-
Man, a clean off land, you try to sell it? And then you're gonna try to get Illinois Bank to, to somehow tear their building down, that piece of property, get it? Not much it costs to assemble property. How do you do it across the street and build a tower? That's how hard it is.
But the best thing we can do is apply those tools we have available.
That's the most valuable piece of land you have down there.
We also have interest from developers and retailers on the five acres where the Ramada sits right now. I, I've got letters of interest for locating on that property.
Well, you got land on Nine Mile Road you can't even sell.
That's a different site.
Can I speak to her? You keep telling me wait.
Well, they were talking, I can't enough-
Go ahead, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Let, let's remember while we're here, how frustrated were we with this building standing there? And it was an eyesore to the city, and all of us wanted it to go down. The DDA has, has moved forward. Has moved forward to a point that we didn't think we would get to, where they actually did a three-party agreement. We actually sold that ownership of the property. That was the thing. The city took ownership of the building, and the DDA used their revenue to buy this property. And they're bringing it forward. I, I have never heard a conversation where OCC was not a component of occupying this land. There has been discussion between the board, um, the city and the planner about using the frontage on Nine Mile, and even with OCC, to use, because they need to service their student population, of using frontage on Nine Mile to be a taxable entity with retail and stores and, and things that they can use. But they gotta buy it first before they do their due diligence with that. Now, when it comes to, I don't know where all this, this brand-new experience is coming from, 'cause we've been fighting for this, for this property for years.
Well, that's the property, you got the property.
No, the city has it.
City's not broke. The city's not broke, they didn't afford to buy that. We own it.
We own it.
That's right, but I mean, I'm trying to say, you didn't, the city could afford to buy the piece of property instead of the DDA if they wished, all right? She had to come back to the city, it was a tax sale. If all the property came back to the city, it didn't belong to the DDA, it's a tri-party.
So, so your, your issue is with the deal that was made? I don't understand what, what the issue is.
Well, I, I don't know how else to explain it. You're giving away a piece of land for a million dollars. Reminds me of Vinay David.
So you think the value is too low?
Reminds me of Vinay David. He said five million dollars on it, you sold it for three five, he gave him a liquor license, and then sold it for a million and a half. That's, that's, that's the kinda business on land that the city does. Condominium's the same way. We're not property owners, we don't know how to handle property. Any real estate guy would tell you, Mr. Smith, these are real estate, he'd tell you what is the best piece of land.
Okay, but the harm today is-
I mean, I've never bought a piece of land with a building on it. It wouldn't have to be condemned to a death.
We're gonna have to find a way to get this property redeveloped. We're gonna have to find a way to change the perception and the image of the DDA.
Plus it's off the tax roll, that's the other ingredient.
Well, OCC is, uh, something that I probably have, Providence Hospital and probably have at Lawrence Tech. They're all off the property. I mean, they've made a package.
I didn't say I was against OCC. I would, you know?
So, so what, the problem you have is too low.
I'm just telling you that, when I buy a real estate person, I'll tell you what the problem is.
But you want, you wanna, you want them to pay more for the four point eight acre?
Well, you, you should pay more for the, for the vacant piece with more nine mile frontage. It's more valuable than, than you have less frontage and a building that has to come down on it. I mean, I mean, it's common thing. I mean, I don't even understand what the, with, how you can even, you know, I mean, I'm sorry if I missed this because it's laid out plenty this way, and seeing the property, not about the tri-party.
So you would, you would, you would be in support of this, if the frontage was-
Buy the whole thing. Buy the whole thing, leave it, ease it over here, it's straight down to Nine Mile Road, and, and give them the right of way. They've got a nice rectangular piece of property to, to be a flexible-
Well, we have an opportunity for development.
But down the road somewhere. In the meantime, you're gonna tear that down, clean it up, and, and, and then, then they're gonna come in and say, you know what? We're interested in that piece of property, absolutely. If I'll clean it, darling. Then I'll have to vacate the road, make it straight, and I need that extra piece of land? No, you do it to us.
Why not allow the DDA six months to see what we can do with that? I mean, the college is there. The college is ready to buy the, the ten acres.
Well, so-
Right, so if they buy the ten acres, you square it off. That's contrary to what you're saying, Don. Then you don't have any space for retail development.
No, what I'm trying to say is, can you just let the Oakland Community College expand and create students which will bring population down in that area, which will make the property that is remaining worth more because the students will have places to shop, to hang out, whatever. That's what happened to Royal Oak. That's what happened to Royal Oak. When Wiser turned me down on this one and went to Royal Oak, that's when the bars hopped up. That made Royal Oak, they were broke, they were on their knees. I was there as part of it. And Wiser turned down that deal. I mean, I'm familiar with this situation.
I think we can accomplish what you're asking us to do by, by allowing OCC to purchase the five acres I'm here to, to seek approval tonight. Because-
That's on the table, council?
I mean, the economic generation, potential of OCC, and granted, I'm not a taxpayer, but the economic development potential there, that's the space, this, this, all of this land over there has been sitting and available for development for a number of years.
Over ten years.
Sam Yono, who's a very savvy developer-
That's because you had a strong landlord that owned the building and let it decay and bringing his people from down in Orleans, trying to habitat the place.
I agree, he, he did the best job running them himself. Right, but he's a savvy developer in regards to his connections. If this could have been developed commercially, I think he would have done it, not given the property back.
He couldn't afford to tear the building down, was the big problem. If he could afford to tear the building down, he'd probably sell you the whole piece.
I think if we have the opportunity to purchase this and network in the community with Providence, as we have in the past, that something that can generate some economic value can be developed on that five acre parcel that will, as you said, in turn, create more value for parcels to the west. And that's, that's the best that I can offer you. I know we don't, we don't pay taxes. We're bringing five thousand students in there and hopefully a lot more that are gonna have, gonna have needs over time. I don't know whether retail is gonna, is gonna spark there potentially, or whether potentially more offices. You may clip off the back of all these, thinking you're doing some good by promoting commercial, and office may become in vogue next year. And then we've cut, you've cut your legs off in the office because you don't have the depth of the market. So I, I think, you know, we're offering a million and a half dollars today.
Yeah, I hear you.
I, I mean, it's very speculative. The community's a development business.
If you're in the real estate business, you know exactly what I'm talking about.
I, I am, we are developers, I'm in the real estate business. And if I could predict what would happen tomorrow with this property, I'd be, uh, emptying my 401K out. But, uh, there's no, there's no future in predicting right now what is gonna happen there. The college wants to purchase it, they have to expand.
I hear you, you don't have to, yeah. I, I don't be, I don't be rude, but-
No, you're not being rude, I-
You know exactly what I'm talking about, you've got a thing to sell, and you're selling it, so.
Well, we got some questions there.
Yeah, you know, uh, maybe I was under the wrong impression, uh, that we were keeping some of the Nine Mile frontage for our own, uh, future development.
That, that's not the case with the college, yes.
You got five acres.
We just wanted to talk about what the college was gonna do with the Nine Mile, its Nine Mile frontage. That was something we discussed. So, so you're not totally, uh, mistaken?
Do we have anything from the college about that?
About the Nine Mile Road frontage? I do not have a plan for you today. You know, our growth has been rapid. We're, we're trying to address the needs of the market. Steve Reeve, Reeve can speak much more eloquently to this than, than I can. Um, they're constantly evaluating their curriculum and, and how to partner with industry and, uh, public agencies, public healthcare in the community to, to try to serve their needs and the needs of, of the workforce and the unemployed. So, you know, Tim is constantly networking and seeking opportunities for, for development there. Providence is, you know, an obvious choice, but-
One more question, Al, you said something about a restaurant.
Mr. Cypher, I'm eligible, I can-
Yeah, I know, but I've, I've arranged a point.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's kinda the exact point that I thought we had discussed, um-
Here, here's the way I see it. We have two directions. We can sell ten acres of property to the college and everybody gets whole. They knocked out the hotel. Now you have at least eight acres sitting vacant for a period of time because you, Doug just mentioned he has no plans. You don't generate any tax revenue. You sell five acres to the college right now, they're ready to buy the other five acres. They're giving us six months to allow us to go through this process that Fred has. Allow us to see if we can get any retail. Now, you give yourself a chance. So which direction do you wanna take? You want the safe direction, or do you want tax revenue? I want tax revenue.
Yeah, now that's a fair point.
Yeah, I guess I, I was all set till I heard that last thing. Where's the tax revenue gonna come from? If we own the property, we don't pay ourselves taxes. And we have a hotel. Well, college is ready to-
No, we can keep the frontage, we own the property.
Okay, that wasn't a, wasn't, I had three questions. It turned out I had four. My first que, my first question is, what is Plan B? If the, if Mishtha says no to turn, get money to, give us money to tear the hotel down?
Plan B is where we're at, at, right now, today. It becomes part of the redevelopment. We're on sale, the entity buying it would tear down the property, or the city can tear it down. We, we lose nothing in submitting that application.
That's right, but if, uh, if they took, they say no, then somebody's gotta pay to tear down the hotel. That's not me. What's the five acre piece of property worth with the hotel on it?
We, we've had an appraisal done on both pieces.
Okay.
The total appraisal with the building came in at two point one million.
Now, that's the whole ten acres?
The whole ten acres.
Without the hotel?
Right.
Without the hotel?
Yeah.
That's not my question. My question is, what's the five acre piece worth with the hotel on it?
Nothing.
I don't recall that number, I'm sorry.
Because that's what we're looking at. Because either the city has to pay to tear down, and then try to get the money back by selling it, which most likely will just come out even, won't make any money on it.
Why does that have to happen?
Pardon?
Why do, why do we not have to make money on it?
Well, no.
That's what I'm not understanding, which is-
Well, because, well, I agree, I agree. No, no, I, I agree, and I'm not, the question is, I don't know why the DDA only is getting back what they-
Right.
I don't know why they didn't sell for more than, than it cost. But, uh, that's a fair question. But we're looking at, uh, building girls who turned down the hotel. You know, but we, we do a mile of, of road construction or tear down the hotel. Yeah.
One lane, one mile.
Yeah, that's to get us from-
One lane, one mile.
That'll get us from the civic center to the library anyhow. So that's, so that's, that's a, that's a question. And then, the third question that I had was, were there closing costs involved in when we purchased this piece of property? And if so, is that in the selling price so that the DDA stays whole?
Yes, there were selling costs. The allos picked up the majority of it. The portion that we paid is part of the, it's actually a million, one million, five hundred, five thousand dollars. Closing costs were twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, but we ought not to be giving away a dollar of it to anybody-
That's correct.
Uh, if we don't have to. But the question that Mr. Jordan had, the same one I had, is I don't know why he didn't sell for more than, than we bought it for, but, because it is a prime piece of property. And then, I just thought of another question. Then when we, we, the five acre piece that we own, I don't know why we don't go ahead right now and deed the front piece of it, so that there's no question about whether we own it or, you know, whether it's gonna get sold to somebody else or not, uh, for development.
Well, we own it.
Yeah, but we ought to split that, split that-
Oh, just split.
Split that property right now and put a, make a separate deed for the piece that we think that will, would, uh, go to, uh, for development and then market it.
You mean the frontage part?
The frontage part, and then market it.
I have a friend from Royal Oak who's with the DDA. Do you wanna, can I?
Shouldn't she speak first?
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, I just want a second, a second, please.
I agree with Councilman Superski and Councilman Frazier, because I do remember the meeting that we had in terms of the exchange that was going to take place after we purchased, or after the DDA purchased the property. But I hear to my nose, I did not know it was just gonna be an even exchange. I would have thought that we added more dollars to the revenue we see when you're, you're selling it.
The college, your own appraisal on the property? You've gone out, and we've all agreed on the price of the property being three hundred thousand dollars an acre. I would love to sell it for five hundred thousand dollars an acre. I'm not quite sure they'd buy it.
I'm not saying five hundred dollars, no, but I'm just saying some cushion money, just some extra money when you're buying.
I will be the first agreement to, understanding my budget.
If you let them tell us, no, we don't, we don't carve ourselves out of money which goes to the other five acres. I do not, or hope that we're not going to be restricted in terms of when we sell that to Oakland community. We're not just gonna do another even exchange, are we?
Of course I'm in love.
While we, I just hope we're not gonna do that.
I, I think we're looking to create as much value, and by creating that brownfield, we're, we're creating value. We're looking to get someone else to pick up the demolition costs.
Okay.
Uh, and again, to put more money in our pocket at, at the end sale. At the end of the day, once we clear that property, it's gonna have an appraisal. If the market's at three hundred an acre, three fifty, that's where, where it'll be at. I, I would love, when I started here in two thousand and eight, we were clearly at, at five hundred thousand an acre throughout most of the city. Today, we're at three hundred thousand.
So if we clear this land, Brad, and, and it gets in, in condition, and somebody else wants to buy it outside of Oakland community, would we then go with the highest bidder, or are we locking ourselves into Oakland?
No, I'd like to go with the highest bidder, and who has the best, best development for the site as well. Um, I, I wish we knew what we were gonna see on the easternly five acre piece. I think that's been one of the struggles. But on the west side, you know, we want more time to complete our due diligence, to create a vision, and hopefully a vision that has some greater potential tax yield.
But one is we're just not, yes, we do wanna see Oakland community, but at the same time, I think we've gotta look out for our own interests. Thank you.
Mr. Cypher, did you wanna make a comment?
Yes.
The mic doesn't work, the mic doesn't work, that's why I was, I know why, I know I'm dying in Washington. I have lived here for forty-seven years, and I'm beginning to see chaos in my city. You have a new place- You have a new police chief and a new fire chief. That hotel is exposed in different places, and what's gonna happen while you make up your mind and that hotel remains standing? They're gonna be awful busy with vagrants, and right now, we don't have the staff to go chase the vagrants in that building. It's getting cold out, and the vagrants are now starting to go into the stores and everything, trying to stay warm. It's coming winter. How many times do you have to decide to get rid of an obsolete building that if you tear it down, something new will revive? Things do revive if you try. But if you leave these places standing, who wants to go there? Nobody wants to go there. And now you just have one of the, uh, apartment buildings, would like to get rid of one? Or is it trouble?
Yeah.
That's what I thought it seemed like, interesting. But it, it's like, let's get this damn building down. Who pays for it? What pays for it? We are all one city. And I'm here forty-seven years, and I've never seen such bickering as going on now in the country. And you've gotta start thinking, what are we doing less with? What can we do more with? And how can we develop anything if we can't tear down a building?
I have a question.
If we're being asked, in another aspect, be aware.
The question was, did we get appraisal for the property? And what was the appraisal for the four point eight?
It's approximately a million dollars for each parcel, the four point eight.
So this parcel, you did, did the school appraisal, or what?
And we've had, uh, probably the four appraisals done, and there's still a little precedent out there. Uh, the ranges were from fifty cents to seven dollars, or eight dollars.
And seven dollars per acre is the three hundred thousand?
Yep.
Yeah.
And we're, we're asking a million five five, right?
Correct.
Is that what we agreed to?
That's what we agreed to with, in the negotiations.
You know, we are, um, if you could hear some of the offers that Blue Cross Blue Shield received for occupiable buildings in a larger acreage, acreage, the, the, the passion that I hear in the discussion you're having, I agree with you, but we have to deal with reality. If we have legitimate appraisals, and this is what this property is gonna fail for, I would like for us to get more. We have not, we have not lost any money. I hear what Councilwoman Jordan is saying, you know, opportunity with the city to rezone, I think Councilman Frazier said that, to split that off. But in reality, are we supposed to discuss real estate in an open meeting? Should this be a closed meeting?
Acquisition of, of real estate can be done in a closed session.
Okay.
But we, everyone's acquired, it's, it's sale.
It's sale now.
That we're stuck in here, and that would be the only option. So what, we are not getting the money that we think property should be, and if it's a legitimate appraisal and you have a buyer, then that's the reality that we're facing. I almost fell on my knees when I heard what people were offering for Blue Cross Blue Shield. It was unbelievable. But that's the world, hm?
Good or bad?
Bad.
Well, I don't know what it was. I mean, that, that's, it could go into extension.
A couple million, a couple million. It's, it's awful. And I consider that to be a prime piece of property, with buildings moved and ready, and barely getting more than what we would get for these two acres, these eight acres that has nothing on it. So that's our reality. I understand, I hear what you're saying, but when you get appraisal, do you get legitimate real estate that we hired, um, through the DDA?
Sell the whole piece for the two million, whatever it was appraised at, sell it all to the college and walk away from it.
So we lose opportunity?
What opportunity?
To, to split that land to ensure we get some revenue on the frontage, to possibly get another developer. It's all kinda opportunities there. But if, if that, if that's the route you wanna go, I think we'll lose opportunity.
Yeah, I just had a question with the numbers. So we're saying that the closing costs and all the legal fees are twenty-eight thousand. So is that one million five hundred, five thousand less than twenty-eight thousand? Or are they adding on twenty-eight thousand to the purchase?
No, no, no. Yono's paid twenty-three thousand, the DDA paid five thousand.
And are we getting that five thousand? Okay, so the five thousand-
That's right.
Still in the car, got it.
Where are we?
Item three.
We're requesting a motion for approval, Madam Chair, Madam President.
Well, I wanna, we have to vote to, to-
Well, we have to.
Hi, in your motion, Mr. Spire, the motion, Mr. Spire?
Support.
You can ask, correct?
Want the motion?
We have, we have, we have a need to ask. We have a motion by Mr. Spire, supported by Mr. Frazier. All in favor?
Hi.
No. Okay, you have a motion to ask?
And I would move to, um, sale of the four point acres, four point eight acres, um, approval of that sale to OCC.
As was requested, a motion by Mr. Spire, supported by Mr. Frazier.
Yeah, of course, we'd get a decision.
Well, all right, um, a motion to approve the sale. All in favor?
I, first.
All?
No.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.